Answers about a shipo and things like that as far as the historic preservation of the building. We discussed, again, about the cafe and they want, I'm not for it, they're going to be presenting something they want, some kind of parking restriction for a restaurant café, but I believe that the town doesn't have any restrictions on that, you know, per square foot. We went back and forth on it.
Requirements, you mean?
Yeah, the requirements, yeah. Because they're, you know, they're saying, oh, well, you should be per seat, and I said, okay, but how do you count for the people that are coming off the train and the people that are walking there from, so it's very hard to judge by, as per seat. So, I don't know, they're going to be presenting something to you on that, and I hope that it doesn't get included. And then, what else did we discuss? Yeah, we were talking about a restoration plan or something, but not to be part of this, just between us, because they feel that we should have that before we go to the planning board. I'm open to that, but, you know, we're going to still discuss it. And then, other than that, you know, the only other, you know, the only other questions I had, I'm sorry, I thought tonight was going to be a public, a work session, so I didn't realize we were going to have this, I got my dates screwed.
That's right. Hope that someone should have.
Yeah.
Can't believe.
Yeah, exactly, I guess they will be next year.
My own thing on the limited service carryout restaurant, I know we told you the word pizzeria on that, but what if somebody prepares a pizza there in some other type of oven or something, is that going to be an issue?
Would that even be considered a pizzeria if you're not set up as one?
You mean that you warm up a pizza?
Yeah, what if they, they're able to cook it in an electric stove or something?
But pizza's part of the menu that's available.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because we literally struck the word, but, you know.
But selling pizza wouldn't make it a pizzeria.
No, no.
It sounds like they had a mini or...
I saw pizza.
Yeah, it would be, I have...
It wouldn't exclude, it wouldn't exclude selling pizza.
Yeah.
That was just one of the questions I...
Police office want to heat up slices for people, make that spot.
And, um...
Keep it in P O.
So, Michael, you were saying before the meeting something about the, about if you bought it for a dollar?
Oh, yeah, then their other concern was that if I, because I have a buyout clause then for a dollar, that they, but in order for that to take place, the MTA would have to exercise their right to buy it from the original Central whatever railroad, and then, and then I would have the right for that. So, they were concerned about that, because they were, they were saying, you know, what would, what would happen at that point, with, I guess, they started about taxes, and what about if the laws, or the rules in my lease about having to deal with shipo for the historic preservation of the building. So, I don't know where we left off on that, to be honest with you with that, but I don't know how that would be reflected in, you know, a zoning issue.
I think you could put it in the zoning, right?
Yeah, I mean...
If, in other words, if you somehow, this all triggered and you bought the building, then you'd no longer be responsible for following the shipo requirements of the lease, is that...
No, I think I am, because I think it's still, it's still...
So, it would end up in a deed, maybe?
Yes, I think it's, I think it's, it's...
Well, no, depends on what the terms of sale are.
Who knows? Yeah, of course.
Right.
I mean, once, once there's a sale, that lease is not affected anymore, you won't it.
Right.
So, the terms in that go away, yeah.
But the zoning would continue, right?
Right.
So, if we have something in the zoning that says you've got preservation, that stands, whether it's a lease or...
Or they can't change it, we still have this thing that says the use will preserve the exterior of the apartment.
Right, we shall, we keep going back to that same, same thing.
Change to the exterior of the building. I mean, we have that, which is actually probably more restrictive than, than, than what's in the lease, because the lease kind of invisions changes, that they just would have to get, you know, be, you know, under the shipo standards. I was thinking, such a point, not going to change this, except to restore the exterior to its original.
Right.
So, I, I, I'm not sure, but I think...
That's the answer.
Pardon?
That's the answer.
Yeah, I think it's stricter than...
Their concern is that if he actually purchased it, that he would no longer need to adhere to shipo standards, but our standards in the zoning, as they exist today, or on December 4th, hopefully, will, are more restrictive.
Yeah.
So, that's the answer.
Right.
And just so everybody knows, so nobody thinks that the village has the lease in case anybody else doing it, that this forward request was not made of the village's lease.
Yeah, no, no, that was, that was done by Hudson House, which...
They got it from MTA.
Yeah, they decided to go ahead and do that, which, you know, I wasn't...
I can't believe that they got the answer, that they, that their request was...
That's ass, right?
Yeah, yeah. You know, I wasn't completely opposed to them having, you know, certain parts of it, if it was necessary, I just don't like the way that they went about doing it. You know, we should have had our meeting, and I had it sitting on the desk, I would have photocopied the page that they need. It's an eighty-two page document, what do you need eighty-two pages of stuff for?
Oh, we've got the thing.
You know, it's done, is done, and we'll move forward, and hopefully, we'll get this resolved. So, we have to wait till December 4th, I guess, or something to...
Yeah, I think this board's inclined to do that, but I just have one quick question. The restoration plan that they talked to you about, you said it's not going to be part of this, you meant it's not going to be part of the rezoning?
The zone, the zone.
The zone change, right, okay, so you have, they've discussed with you what they have expectations about.
Between us, you know...
But it's, it's between you, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm willing to work with that, I've been working with everyone since I...
No, I'm not question, no, that part I'm not questioning at all, so, I guess I'm, what I'm, what I'm going to capsulize here is, is to say that this board should not expect a request from Apoa and Hudson House for them to consider a change to the zoning regarding restoration.
Yes, I always...
That was, that was the gist of what you just, your meeting was about.
That's what I think, you know, what happens when they show up, I don't, I can't speak for them.
I just wanted to be clear about what you had...
When you said us, you wanted to define the us.
Right.
It was us, them, not us, us.
Exactly, thank you.
Right, and that our, what the zoning proposal we're going to vote on is not going to memorialize an agreement between you two, you and the other party.
Correct, right, correct, yes. I would not like it to, I, I think that should be a separate issue, because it's, that's not a zoning issue, that's...
Exactly.
So, no, we understand where you would be on that, yeah.
They were agreeing on that as well.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, no, they talked about it at the work session very clearly, so, it's not, it's not a secret.
I mean, other, other, other than that, I don't know what else. You know, I did express to them that, you know, the more limiting that the zoning is, you know, the more limited is for me to get certain tenants there, and, you know, we'll see. They want, what they want me, what they want me to do is, when I do have a tenant, that they want me to go talk to them about it before I make a presentation, but, so, I don't know what, you know, I guess they're my silent partners.
All of it has nothing to do with you.
I don't think they're very silent.
Yeah, that's silent at all. I, I think it's great you guys met and talked, and, of course...
I feel like we go back where we were nine months ago.
Right. So, we'll see what happens at the next meeting, hopefully, everything's, but I think they're going to get everything to you guys prior to the meeting.
We've asked... I think we asked for, a few days before.
Yeah, November twenty-ninth was the date that I had talked to them or exchanged about having some information about, so...
Yeah, so if you have any changes to, if you can get those by the twenty, twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth, I said, yeah.
Pretty much going along with what you guys...
We just heard what you had to say, yeah.
I'm going along with what you guys...
Well, if anything comes to your head while you're interviewing...
The only thing you seem to mention was the pizzeria and the fact that we passed it down at our pizzeria.
And the parking, you know, the parking, I like...
No, 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 it's sort of your changes, yeah.
Right.
The parking's not in the draft now.
For a restaurant or a café.
But you still have that lot you have to create, right?
Right.
And of twelve to fourteen spaces, right?
Right, but what they're trying to say is that I should have, if I have a café, there should be a standard in here, like a one per seat or something like that.
I understand that, I'm just, I mean, realistically, you know, parking...
Right, what I'm trying to say is, listen, you know, how can we account for how many people are coming on the train, how many people are walking from the neighborhood, how many people are, because I'm, I'm hoping that this building is going to be used more by the neighborhood than anybody else coming out from outside of town, so...
I agree with you.
You know, that, that's what I was trying to go for, I, I clearly told them, you know, I don't want what they have down in Dobb's area, it's not what I'm looking for for the area, and I don't think that fits in the neighborhood. You know, I, obviously, I don't agree with the whole alcohol thing, but that's, you know, that's, I think that they should be able to have a glass of wine or something there, but, you know, they're afraid that it's going to turn into a Mercy College hangout. Yeah, but...
It would, with or without alcohol, if it's successful, you know, interesting.
Right, but I, but I expressed to them that, at the end of the day, they have to understand, I'm willing to work with them, I'm also the one that decides who goes in there or not, you know, as far as who I lease to, so, if we can come into agreement on that, and we work together, you know, we can do something that's good for the neighborhood and for everyone, together.
Cool.
Okay.
So, so, the main issue that we should expect to hear something about is a request for a parking requirement to be included in the code.
And something about if, change of ownership for, for shipo or something like that.
Right, right, okay, but I think we, I think we're pretty comfortable there, so, okay, that's fine.
And just so everybody, the board realizes, anybody listening, that one of the requirements for the special permit is that there is adequate off-street parking for the proposed use. So, the planning board would have to make sure there's enough parking, and then they could base it depending on what kind of a café it is. It's just a coffee counter, the people are going to grab coffee going to and from the train, you know, you might, you might want more parking if there's going to be some tables and you expect people to hang around a little bit with the plan.
Right.
We don't, I mean, exactly, I think it's, it gives them enough leeway to, you know, we don't have to define it now, because what we came up with in a, in a box, or in a vacuum isn't necessarily going to be the greatest thing anyway.
Right.
You know, that's if we even get a café there, you know, I don't know if it's going to be there.
We know, we know that's your challenge, for sure.
Yeah, I say, you know, I might end up with just offices here, I, I have no idea.
Absolutely.
But, but, you know, it's like every other issue that we've talked about, this, this board considered the request for the parking requirement, it may come back to you again, and that's fine, but you, you felt comfortable by having that, that escape hatch there, you know, that overriding clause.
Just doing it that way, instead of doing a parking requirement for restaurants.
Right, so, but, that's okay, but, but...
Right. Yeah, we've talked about this several times here.
Yeah, so, if they get another request for it, they'll deal with it, so, okay.
You know, and one of the things I, I told them about the parking is if, if, if someone shows up and there's not enough parking, they're going to stop coming there, the business is going to suffer, and they're not going to be there anymore.
Right.
So, it's going to, it's going to work itself out eventually, kind of, you know, that's, that's why I think that, that putting that restriction on is not necessary, you know, at this, at this time, you know.
Well, we're glad you finally have your streak up, John Michael.
Well, I was kind of just, I, and that's what I told them, I said, you know, I've been, I've been listening to everyone before I, I got up and spoke was, you know, I wanted to hear the pros and cons, I didn't want to get into, you know, a battle with anyone, and, and I told them that also, I said, you know, I sat back and I listened, and, you know, I absorbed everything that everyone was saying before I, before I made my comments, you know, too early, and, you know, I voiced that with them today as well, so...
Well, we appreciate that.
And they may all be watching, even as you speak, they may be listening, even as you speak.
Well, I'm happy with the progress, and I expect that the next meeting, we'll all reconvene.
Yeah, it's been a long process, but...
Hopefully, it's good enough.
Hopefully, we can resolve this on the fourth, and move forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
So, the boards, the board's continuing the public hearing to December 4th.
Correct. Any other comment from our board? Well, this will be moved.
Just leave it at open.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
You too.
Do I have to leave now, or do you...
Yeah. Now we lock the door!
Exactly.
Should I call my husband and have him see you?
Get Kevin down here, will you? I'll stall.
I've never seen it this afternoon.
Let me tell you again about the mayor presents concert.
Take care, man.
Take care now.
So, the next item is an appointment of an alternate to the architecture review board. I think we've actually spoken about, or maybe I'm something else, you know, in a, out of community county, you want to give a little background?
Well, there were, actually, there are three alternative positions that are listed as, you know, extending the, the regular board, so that when there, when there aren't enough people, these people get pulled in to be on the board. Randy Huff, I think many, you know, has done restorations of two buildings right here in town, one is right across from Village Hall, it's a grayish house, and then, right around the corner on South Barr Street, he restored the second house. He has a background, he's not an architect, but he does have a background in art and in reading blueprints, and I think his actual job is with software development, but he's local, he works from home, he's very available, it's not a big, long walk here to the meetings, it's about sixty steps to get here, and he was certainly interested in this, having gone through the process himself now with several restorations, so he is willing and able to serve, and I'm happy to suggest his name.
Great. Resolved the point, Randy Huff is second alternate to the architecture review board, for a term to expire in December 2018. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? A signature reauthorization for contract 2017-16 for the purchase of a new pump engine with your Irvington Fire Department.
Second pump engine?
Yeah, exactly, so this is a, there's a very simple explanation for this, the resolution that you did at the last meeting inadvertentlyly had only Brenda's title on there as an authorized signer of the purchase order contract, and the reality is, is that, is that I've been involved from the development of the specifications through the bidding process and dealing with, you know, the rejection of the low bidder and all the other things that went into this, and that it makes more sense for me to sign it, I felt uncomfortable just telling Brenda to sign it when she hasn't been dealing with it, so, it wouldn't have been fair, so, it was more appropriate for me to sign it when it comes time, so, that's all.
So, I want to take home a pump.
Yeah, exactly, just adding my title to the list of authorized titles.
Are there any questions on that?
As shop or memorial pumper?
No, I will have no ownership book.
Whereas the board of trustees adopted resolution 2017-166 to award a contract for the purchase of a custom chassis four-by-two, two-thousand-gallon-per-minute pumper, stainless steel body for the Irvington Fire Department, and bulldog fire apparatus for KME. Whereas resolution 2017-166 authorized only the clerk treasurer to execute the contract, and whereas the village administrator has been primarily responsible for overseeing the preparation of fire truck specifications, the bidding process, and evaluation of the bids, now therefore be resolved, authorized village administrator, in addition to the clerk treasurer, to execute the contract with bulldog fire apparatus for KME, for the purchase of a custom chassis four-by-two, two-thousand-gallon-per-minute pumper with stainless steel body for the Irvington Fire Department, as detailed in the board of trustees resolution 2017-166. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Can I, I just noticed the very top line there, is it contract 2017-16?
I'm guessing it's sixteen out of one sixty-six.
I think you mean it to be one six-six, like you have the...
Yeah, I'm not sure, there might only be sixteen.
Or you mean one six-seven?
No, it could be a typo.
I think it might just be sixteen, because it seems like one hundred and sixty-six would be a lot for the year.
It would be the number one.
Contract number, yeah, sixteen, I'm sorry.
Sixteen, oh, okay, so that's right.
It's just sixteen, because it's, I didn't think we'd have any of that slip through.
And then the one six-six is in two places, and the...
Yes, three places.
Three places.
It's only sixteen, 2017-16.
What was the contract under the resolution you did?
Hold on. Find the right page, forgot to...
I think it's correct, but hold on, let me just see. You know what they say about going back to the source documents, right? All right.
What do they say, your dog ate your source document?
Yeah, exactly, okay, yes, the, that resolution number 2017-166 is correct, it also happens to be for the reauthorization of contract number 2017-16, so that's all correct.
That sounds all right, okay.
So, there.
Did we vote that, or not?
Yes, we did.
You're any more about that?
We did, I did.
Except it is red.
We're glad you read it, that's great.
It's fine. Better safe than sorry.
Next is approval of contract 2017-22 for the, with Nolan Landscape Architects, P L L C, for the landscape architectural services.
So, as many of you know, our existing landscape architect, Lucille Mans, is moving on from her private practice and joining a firm. We did interview a highly recommended person, Suzanne Nolan, who Lucille had worked with in the past, I believe I've even worked with her when she was at the county, Pat Natarelli knew her as well, and so, three of us interviewed her, and very pleased to bring her on board as, as our landscape architect consultant, primarily to the planning board, but also, as you know, does other work with other projects as needed, so, that's it.
Is she local, is she...
Not far.
No, I just, I mean, everybody seemed to know her, but maybe she was not here or something.
Yeah, she, she had, yeah, she was, she had worked at the county for, for a period of time.
Is it Neil Rochelle?
Neil Rochelle, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, very helpful, totally understands, you know, the, her, her role with the planning board, and, you know, looking forward to it.
Resolved approved contract 2017-22 with Nolan Landscape Architects, P L L C, for landscape architectural services, and authorized village administrator to execute said contract. Make the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, there's, there's actually a 10A, which is resolution in opposition to the proposed elimination of the Federal Income Act deductions for state and local taxes. The, the current tax proposals in Washington DC, in the House, they propose limiting the SALTs or state local tax, taxes, deduction to $10,000, the Senate doesn't have any deduction at all, I'm not sure what's going to come out, but we think it's, as a board, it's very important to, to maintain the SALTs inductions, we have obviously very high property taxes here, as well as high state taxes, and we think that it would be very detrimental to our residents if these proposals are passed in Washington DC. In addition to passing this tonight, hopefully, I think we should share this with Congressman Lowey, Senator Schumer, and Gillibrand, and as well as all the VOC mayors and administrators, if we can share with them that we, that we do this tonight.
Is there a VOC meeting, or you can just communicate?
There's one on the thirtieth.
Yeah, it's next, it's after Thanksgiving, yeah.
Well, we can send out a copy of it as well.
Yeah.
Too late, but, yeah, who knows?
Right, it might be. Do you know if any of them are working on a similar...
We haven't heard anything yet.
This, this resolution, you know, came through the New York Conference of Mayors, I'm assuming that others are looking at it.
Which they all belong to.
Yeah.
Should we actually, I guess you, we didn't specify, it says, it says that each member of New York's congressional delegation, so we're not limited just to our districts, right? For, it's all...
No, we should, we should send it throughout every New York state congress, congressperson.
You say Congress and, and Senate, you mean Congress, you mean both houses of Congress?
Congressional delegation, yeah, lowercase congressional.
Okay.
Okay, that's not how the actual last line of this was written, so, because I, I understand that you're urging each member, but then, a copy of the resolution being sent to Irvington's federal delegation, that's not all of New York State, so, while it is on the Senate side, but not...
What do you think?
You decide, that's all.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, I'm opening it up.
I think the problem is that...
Do we already have support of our...
We already, we already have needed supports, the thing is really to try to convince, you know, the upstate congressional representatives that makes a big difference to, which they probably already know.
You've already voted?
Yes, well, yeah.
Well, that's true.
The House has already voted, it's just then there's a...
But there will be a new bill.
That'll be a conference committee, and that will, there'll be pressure from the other congressmen to affect the conference resolution, so...
So, Larry's not chasing down all the...
I don't care, I mean, I'm sure there's a mailing list we can find, but you just...
How many are there?
I don't know.
Thirty-six, fifty-something?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's up there.
I don't know.
How many?
State, you know, it was in the thirties, right?
It can't hurt to send it to all of them.
Yes, it can't hurt, so I would say sending it to all the, all the New York City...
So, it's to New York's...
New York's congressional...
congressional delegation, okay.
Persons, right, as well as the, the two senators.
It can't hurt. Okay.
Do we need to copy the governor's office, just so we can...
So, he knows, Mr. Williams, what?
Well, I think that helps people, you know...
Sure.
If we're going to wave a flag, let's include the governor's office.
Okay.
Now, it comes to the reading comprehension part. Whereas...
You want someone else to read it?
No, well, we'll see how badly I do. Whereas, Congress is considering tax reform legislation that would eliminate or severely restrict the federal income tax deduction for state and local taxes, and whereas this deduction, which has been in place for more than a hundred years, is heavily utilized by residents of the village of Irvington, and whereas New York residents already send forty-one billion more to the federal treasury than the federal government returns to New York, and whereas the state and local tax deduction is a fundamental principle of federalism, and without it, our residents would be faced with double taxation, as they'd be forced to pay federal income taxes on the taxes they must pay to the state and local governments, and whereas this federal cost shift onto local governments would place extreme pressure on the village of Irvington budget, including diminished revenue for essential municipal services, including public safety and public infrastructure, and whereas federal increased, an increased federal taxation, taxation and reduced municipal services will harm local housing markets, decrease home values, erode local tax base, and accelerate the departure of New York residents to other states, now therefore be it resolved, that the board of trustees of the village of Irvington expresses its strong opposition to any federal tax reform legislation that would eliminate or limit access to the state and local tax deduction, and urges each member of New York's congressional delegation to vehemently oppose any such bill, and directs that the copy of this resolution be sent to New York's congressional delegation and the governor's office, and the New York State Conference of Mayors.
And the VOC mayors and administrators, okay, got it.
I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're on to reports of boards, standing committees, and officers.
I don't have too much of one, I was, I've been waiting to hear about the status of the, the tree wells, the new tree wells with the, the new design of the metal grates and blah, 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 it's going to be installed. In two locations on Main Street, I don't know where that stands right now.
Yeah, the tree grates are on their way, we understand.
And the trees are waiting that, wherever, how it's growing.
Yeah, so, we're still trying to figure out, you know, if, how it's actually going to get done, the problem is, there's a lot of, there's masonry work that needs to be done, you know, and so, I'm not sure weather-wise how that's going to work.
Yeah.
It's gotten, gotten pretty late.
Which tree wells were chosen?
I believe there's one roughly in front of Squint, and maybe roughly across the street from that, near the rec center.
Yep.
So, we'll see.
That's it for me.
That's it? That's it?
Okay. So, we did mention the Pito and Turkey trial, just add to that that close to 200 people participated, not counting the mayor.
No, not.
I'll also mention something that happened in the past, the bathrooms in all the parks are now closed for the winter. Celebrating Thanksgiving, our annual seniors citizen Thanksgiving lunch sponsored by the O'Hara Foundation is scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, November 21st, 11:30 AM at the senior center, plans for the Thanksgiving Day delivery program for seniors and families in need is also underway, we're grateful to the Addos family for becoming our lead sponsor for this year's event, it's a wonderful event for them to have stepped up, Friday night's open gym program sponsored by the FACE Committee for the fourth and fifth grade students is underway, the IS Executive Board meets on November 21st at 8:00 AM at the senior center. Thank you. One more thing, sorry.
It's okay.
The beautification committee will be greening the village for the holiday season starting on Tuesday, November 28th, if you're interested in helping, please contact Laura Copin and she'll put you in touch with the committee. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, so Greg Allen of the theater wanted me to let you all know that the, the past weekend of the theater, um, project that was introducing plays that were new plays, and there were a total of 300 people that attended the theater over that festival weekend, which is pretty good for a first year of a...
Included the mayor.
I went, I went, what's that?
Included the mayor as well.
I went to one. It was lovely on the, on the Saturday afternoon. Um, yes, I see the mayor's event is already on the agenda, so...
Who was that guy?
That was Ann, that was the second one. Also, during the holiday happening, Clock Tower is presenting Peter Pan with the, the younger kids, both on Saturday and Sunday at 12:30, um, that's not 12:30, late after midnight, it's 12:30 in the middle of the day, by the way. And for those who enjoy, Broadway actress Kelly O'Hara.
Yes.
She's doing a benefit on Wednesday, December 6th for an organization, a nonprofit organization called SAY, and it's called Stuttering Association for Youth, and the director is Noah Corman, and you probably, many of you know the Corman family, they're, he's about your age.
He is my exact age.
He's exactly your age.
A few months younger, same year.
Okay.
But I've been very involved, it's a great, great organization, and I've been involved in much of their fundraising in the past, and they're all great, and Kelly O'Hara's great, and she's a great friend of the organization, and she's excited to come to Irvington, so...
Great, great, so December 6th.
December 6th, you still go to the mayor's concert before that.
Yeah, there are many days, and you could try to go back to last weekend and go to some of the plays if you want to do a time travel. Um, I also, in my role with the, the, the newish Chamber of Commerce, they, they got invited to have a role with this new playground at Main Street School, so I also went to hear the, uh, presentation, not George Chapnick, who's the principal here at Main Street School, and they, they have a major project, I think I sent it to all the board members and it's, can go out to the public, if you're interested, a presentation about the look of the new playground and the kind of material that they have chosen for kids that age to be engaged in, um, so it's, it needs to be fundraised, so how that happens and who participates and how it will all develop, I think, you know, Joyce is probably the best person, but the, they were interested in seeing what role the Main Street businesses might want to play because it's right here on Main Street, so that's, um, in, in process, but I was glad to go to that. The, um, well, you know, the historic district committee will, has been here, so they haven't had any separate meetings other than, um, you know, the process that we're involved in. Uh, the water department and the highway department, so Greg Nielsen sends that they repaired, they rebuilt a catch basin on Cyrus Field Road, so they have done, let's see, 11 so far, a lot of catch basins, and they're resetting the granite tops, they're preparing winter equipment, somebody said they saw snowflakes the other day, did you all see snowflakes?
This morning, yeah.
Oh, it was this morning, okay. Um, so, and they worked with the Parks Department with the Turkey Trot, um, and they put up the bike rack at the Aqueduct parking lot, um, I haven't seen it yet.
I didn't see it either, they probably went up today.
Okay, uh, the clear, there were quite a few trees down during that windy storm on Sunday, there were trees down and they cleared them off of Cyrus Field, Hudson Road East, Tavamire Road, and they put a crosswalk on the east side of Station Road Tunnel, a crosswalk, okay. Have you seen that, Larry?
Sure. I used it.
You used it, okay.
You mean to cross over a trater?
In front of the tunnel, yeah, where the sidewalk ends.
Where the sidewalk ends and you have to get in.
The visibility happens to be fairly good for the pedestrians, I'm not sure, and I actually mentioned to Steve Caporal, they, they may want to consider putting a sign on the western side for the cars coming, saying pedestrian crossing that, that or something of that nature.
Right.
He said, I'm not sure how good the visibility is for the cars that stop at the stop sign to know that someone's going to cross.
Right.
It's the regular white paint?
Yeah.
Crossing, right.
And it's right in front of the tunnel because that...
That's where the sidewalk ended.
And, and it has a little cutout for, for handicapped people.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and then the water department, reading water meters and they have to do fall maintenance to their facilities, they've been working at Halsey Dam on the lower dam breaching project, um, they sent letters to residents to trim or prune excess vegetation from around fire hydrants are on adjacent, that, that are on or adjacent to their property, so that's a good message to get out to the public, um, it's just a matter of looking to see if there's a fire hydrant and go ahead and trim or prune the excess vegetation around it. They pressure tested new manhole installed for the Station Road culvert, a lot going on over at Station Road.
The mission's to get on board.
Right, right, yeah, right.
Very responsive to our constituents.
I want a culvert on Jaffrey, I want a, I want my culvert.
I'm not sure how the coves, the village...
No, they're, they're good.
Right, right.
No, but they're happy.
Care of trees, remove trees for the Halsey Pond Project, Bucci excavating, he's repairing the stone walls for the spillway at the Halsey Pond Project, um, they have to raise a manhole off of Harriman Road and they shut off the water to scenic Hudson Park and Matheson Park, that is probably connected to the bathrooms being closed, okay, I think that's all of my announcements.
I just have a report from the Irvington Village Court, um, this is the charge volume summary report from November 1st until today, um, there were a total of 459 charges received, 574 charges disposed, no one will be surprised to hear that the vast majority are vehicle and traffic law violations, so 373 received and 465 disposed, um, total money collected and remitted to the state, fines $64,726, surcharges $30,250, civil fees $1,0230, for a total of $96,206.50.
That's in one month?
That's in just under two months.
Two months.
That's it?
That's it.
Village administrators report.
Nothing tonight.
Court treasurers absent. Uh, village attorneys report.
No, what?
Public comment?
What?
Review of action items?
The only, the only item was the, looking at the crosswalk sign potential at the tunnel, we'll see how that all lines up, a little tricky, but...
And the Mayor Persents concert, of course.